Good evening and welcome to the SLED Independent School District Video Conference Meeting of the Board of Trustees. We invite you to share your comments with the board during the public comment portion of our meeting. Citizens input electronic sign up shown in the rules for participating at the link provided in the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into discussion on any of the issues risen. The meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:01. We have a quorum with Mr. Sotero Ramirez, Mr. Shane Hagerty, Mr. Michael Salas, Ms. Connie Woodruff, Ms. Catherine Lucero, myself, Charlie Bustillos. President Cruz Ochoa will not be able to attend if this is an excuse absence for this meeting. Trustee Lucero, will you please lead us in the pledge, pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, and indivisible. And now for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucero. We got some recognitions tonight, President Award for Students from the Fashions Program at Baller High School, Del Valle High School, and Hanks High School. President's Award Recognition. Good evening. Before we proceed, I would like to take the opportunity to recognize nineteen winners of this month's Presidential Award from the fashion programs at Baller High School, Del Valle High School, and Hanks High School. Nineteen students demonstrated an outstanding commitment to service excellence last spring when they rolled up their sleeves and put their sewing talents to work, creating more than eleven thousand quality cloth masks for teachers, students, and support staff in our district. Each mask was unique and handmade with love, yet conformed to the core criteria of the fashion programs at each school to ensure the high level of workmanship. As many in our community, still, we are still adjusting to the COVID-19 restriction, these students and talented teachers wasted no time in helping those who needed it the most. In fact, many of these students were class of 2020 seniors who stayed with us long enough to make sure they saw this project through to the end. Once our students return to campus for face-to-face learning, tonight's winners will be recognized at the campus with a certificate for earning the President's Award this month. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, we thank all of tonight's winners for the exceptional dedication, loyalty, service, excellence to the SLED Independent School District community. Now, we're moving on to the citizens' input. Ms. Matheson, do we have any citizens' input?
We do. We have Ms. Arlinda Valencia regarding COVID.
Okay.
Good evening, Chairman Bustillo, Dr. De La Torre and Board of Trustees.
Good evening, Ms. Valencia.
I'd like to take this opportunity to say thank you for delaying the return of teachers to campuses this week and allowing them to continue to teach from home. With COVID-19 plans, they're very hard to keep and changes are happening every day. The fact that you have been flexible and responsive to all those changes is a testament to your hard work. I hope you will continue to monitor the daily cases and continue to base your decisions on the outcomes. But for now, on October nineteenth, all teachers and students, not all teachers and aides, will be scheduled to be back in the classroom, ready to teach at face-to-face. If that is true, I would like to suggest that all employees that have direct contact with students be tested for COVID-19. I believe that if they are tested and are COVID-free, they will feel an additional layer of confidence and peace of mind. Walking into school knowing that they are COVID-free and their colleagues are COVID-free will make a huge difference in the classroom. If a teacher then contracts COVID, the point of contact tracing will be much easier. As for all other employees, I would like for the district to please advise them to self-test at our district's testing centers as soon as possible. I know testing may be an inconvenience, but I believe it's necessary. It is vital to know where we stand. It's better to know where we stand than to be in the dark. I hope you will consider this request, and I know it's a big request, but I hope that you can make it a reality. I think that it would be a great addition in helping our teachers go back and feeling safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Valencia.
The next one, we have Ruben Salas with us. And we're just gonna ask to unmute your mic, Mr. Salas.
Sorry. Okay. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
I apologize. My video is not working. Well, thank you for, you know, your time as well. And I guess from a parent's standpoint about COVID and so forth, I know we're delayed until the twenty-sixth for in-person learning and so forth. I guess my concern is why has there not been, I'm gonna say transparency from the district in regard to cases within the district like we see along other districts within El Paso. I, my intent, I guess my concern is because my intent is to send my child, one of my kids back to school on the twenty-sixth pending any other major changes. He does need that, I'm gonna say, more hands-on attention because he does have an IEP and he is struggling severely with the online learning. So, you know, from a parent's standpoint, I'm hesitant to send him back, but then from a parent's standpoint, I also understand that he needs to go back. So it's frustrating for me to not have any information. From what I have heard over the last few weeks, there have been at least two positive cases within Parkland High School, and yet I hear about it online. So, I'm just, you know, just kind of frustrated, you know, why we don't, you know, have, I think, more transparency either from the district and/or the school specifically. Because you guys have always been really good about sending out multiple messages about anything else except this. Considering we don't know where we are or where we're going, you know, things are gonna change. I get that. I understand that you guys are doing, you know, the best that you can, but as parents, I think we need to be a little bit more informed and kind of up to date as far as what the plan is. Everybody else is, you know, I guess I'm comparing us to the other districts where there's always, they're always talking about it and we're not. And I don't know, you know, that's my guess where I'm at it from a parent's standpoint. You know, other than that, you know, that's just my major concern because I'm taught, I'm in the middle. I, you know, from a parent's standpoint, I gotta protect my child, but then from a parent's standpoint, my son needs to go back to school. So, you know, and if we extend it through December, you know, like some of the other districts are talking about, he's gonna fail and he's a freshman. He's struggling literally in all his classes, even with the tutoring and even the assistance that he's getting from his teachers. So I'm like, you know, I'm just frustrated, you know, because we're not getting more transparency from the district, but thank you for your time.
If I may, normally we don't respond to this, but Ruben, does your son participate in the athletics?
No, sir, he does not. No, because he's failing his classes, so he would be ineligible, but no, sir, he's not.
So our plan right now is when we have cases, and we have had cases at a number of our schools, including Parkland, we notify all of the parents of those student athletes who are vulnerable to COVID. We don't notify the entire community because those children, your child, isn't participating in athletics. And to date, all of the cases have been, have involved student athletes. If there was a case involving a student in one of our student hubs, we would certainly notify all of those parents as well, but your child's not participating in a student hub. And then the last thing I would tell you is that those districts who have claimed that they're gonna be out until December have to apply for a waiver, and the waiver is a four-week waiver, so it doesn't get us to December. It gives us four weeks, and there are some very strict requirements around those waivers. So I think the difference between our district and maybe some of the neighboring school districts is that this board and this administration has always been very deliberate and thoughtful about putting information out there. We don't speculate. We don't set a date for the nineteenth or the twenty-sixth because there isn't any one of us that know what will be happening in the region on the nineteenth or the twenty-sixth. The only thing that we can respond to is the data, and we've got metrics that indicate that if the numbers are here, teachers return, if the numbers are here, students return, and it's part of the TEA initial waiver application that we sent in. So we're not trying to be, we're not trying to be less transparent than other school districts. We just don't want to speculate and believe that we can predict what it's gonna look like two, three, or four weeks down the road. And we also know, and I spoke to TEA earlier today, that the maximum waiver that any school district in the state of Texas can receive is four weeks, and they're encouraging two weeks. So I hope that helps.
Yes, sir, it does. I just, like, it does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Salas.
Vice President Bustillos, that's all we have.
Thank you, Ms. Matheson. Dr. De La Torre, do we have any presentations for this evening?
We do. I think we've got a very informative presentation. We've been working hard every day communicating with TEA. We met with Dr. Ocaranza this morning, so we have a lot of information for you at this time. I'd like to turn it over to Lindley Leeper, who has a slideshow or a slide deck that might help us, and then at the end, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. De La Torre. Good evening, Vice President Bustillos, members of the board, and Dr. De La Torre. Let me share my screen real quickly, and we'll go from there. There we go. Ms. Monica, can you see that?
I can.
Okay, perfect. Can the rest of you see it okay, or does the Zoom meeting show up in part of the box? I mean, there we go. Maybe that will help. Okay, so this evening, we do have a COVID-19 update for you. We're gonna talk a little bit about the training that's been provided to administrators over the last couple of weeks, and actually even longer than that, but in-depth over the last two weeks. We'll talk about our contact tracing procedures and how we go about that at a campus. Then we'll look at the existing TEA waiver and the conditions that were attached to its approval. We'll talk about our current code status under our own reset, reimagine, respond plan that's been approved and published since July. We'll also look at beginning-of-year assessment data and the associated academic impacts that it's projecting. And then finally, we'll end with next steps that may be available to the district for consideration. And so at each campus, there is a COVID-19 response team, and that team is largely made up of the same folks that sit on the Safety and Security Committee because they're already familiar with communication protocols. And over the last two weeks, as I mentioned, we have taught them about the local health authority, which is the LHA's Risk Exposure Matrix. We developed our own flow chart to summarize that information and to simplify it because the matrix is a little bit difficult to follow. And the purpose of that flow chart and matrix is to help us identify and classify anyone who's a high-risk close contact versus anyone who's a low-risk close contact. And once they've been identified and documented, then we're responsible to report the high-risk close contacts to Dr. Ocaranza's office in the Public Health Department. And we also, as TEA requires, we reach out to any parent of a child or a staff member if they were present on campus. Now, TEA says that if the students are solely remote and they never have any on-campus activities, we don't have a duty to notify them because it would be difficult to help them understand why they're being notified when they don't have a child that is present. However, on our website and in response to Mr. Salas's comment, under COVID-19 activity levels, we do report on a daily basis in a table the campus or the location where a case was identified, the number of cases identified. And so you'll see that it's masked if we have five or less people identified as positive on that date. And then we also report how many are high-risk close contacts. Those are also masked if they are five or less to protect the privacy of the individual. We've been reporting that since early September or probably mid-September, but it goes back to the date when we started our phased reopening, which was September eighth, when we allowed athletic strength and conditioning to resume. And so at the district level, we also have the COVID-19 Response Team. Their primary function of that group is to assist, advise, train, and support. So I can't think of a single contact tracing episode where the COVID-19 team from the district has not supported and actually been at the campus to help them wade through it for the first time because it's not an easy exercise when it's not something you practice on a daily basis. Human Resources and Ms. Belmonte's and Student Health Services are responsible for submitting our official case reports to the Public Health Department, TEA, what we call DISHs, the Department of State Health Services, and the Texas Division of Emergency Management. And so as I mentioned, we created our own flow chart to summarize the local health authority's process for identifying close contacts. And obviously, it begins at the top with a positive case identification. And the very first question we ask is, was the student or staff member under consideration within six feet of a test or lab-confirmed positive case? If the answer is no, we immediately set them aside because there's no risk identified and there's no further action required other than notification if they were present on campus. And you might ask, how is that possible that someone on a campus has no risk at all? So using a high school as a learning hub, for an example, consider that we may have football, working out, practicing on the campus. We have volleyball teams practicing on the campus. We have seventh and eighth graders attending in a middle school section of the learning hub and high school attending in a section of the learning hub. If, for instance, in this case, the football player tested positive but was never within the learning hub academic area, then we would immediately say that all of the students in the middle school academic and high school academic areas have no risk because they were never within six feet of the positive case. So once we've done that, then we look to the question, all right, yes, someone was within six feet. Now we want to know, were they within six feet for fifteen cumulative minutes? And that's cumulative within a twenty-four-hour period. If the answer is no, they're automatically classified as a low risk, and this is all driven by the local health authority's guidance. They're classified as low risk. They get a letter from us. It advises them of the symptoms, the current list of symptoms. It tells them where they can go for free testing, advises them to self-monitor, gives them a phone number to call, and generally tells them, follow up with your own personal practitioner if you have concerns. If we identify someone who has been within six feet for cumulative fifteen minutes, that individual is classified as a high risk. We immediately notify the local health authority, Dr. Ocaranza's office. They open a case investigation and they reach out individually to that person and they personally follow up with them. The individual identified as a high risk is quarantined for a minimum of fourteen days from the date they were last exposed. They're advised to self-monitor for symptoms. They're offered testing. They're told to check their temperature twice a day, and then obviously to avoid contact with anyone else at high risk or anyone who might be already immunocompromised. And so that summarizes the close contact process. It was developed straight from the LHA's guidance, and this is what we use when we're at the campuses to guide them in contact tracing. So let's move along and talk about the TEA waiver that's currently in effect. As you know, on August the seventh, we brought our second four-week transition waiver to the board for approval. And a condition that was required by TEA is that we submit with that waiver application the local health authority's metrics. And they ask us to determine what would allow us to end our transition period early. And so Dr. Ocaranza's office came up with the first three metrics on this table. And I say first three because today we've added another in collaboration with Dr. Ocaranza's office, and that's related to hospitalization rate. So on August the seventh, Dr. Ocaranza gave us the first three metrics in this table. And his guidance said that we could end our transition period prior to October nineteenth if we met any two of the three metrics under code yellow. So if any two of the first three were true, we were allowed to begin face-to-face instruction then. And to Dr. De La Torre's point, we keep trying to set a date, but the data changes so quickly that by setting a date, we're unable to really keep in line with what the data is reporting on that day. So I'm gonna show you a little bit more about why that's true in just a moment. So again, the board approved our waiver application. We submitted it with the local health authority's metrics and TEA approved it on August seventh. That waiver required face-to-face instruction for every family who desired it if any two of those three metrics were met. And you may know or recall, right now, we have our access to face-to-face instruction limited to learning hubs and for those students that we've identified as really in need of that extra support. However, eventually, we have to move in line with these metrics, and if two and three of those become positive or become true, we're obligated under the existing waiver to open it for any family who wants face-to-face instruction. So I've included here at the top of this slide, and we'll make this public later, that is the link to our home webpage where we have the COVID-19 indicator levels. And so you would see if you looked there now, I believe it's as of ten-two instead of ten-seven, but it will be updated shortly. This shows you clearly that we are in code red. And even with the addition, and for some reason on this slide, it's the third indicator, even with the addition of hospitalization rate, which is currently at fifteen percent, we remain in code red. The reason the hospitalization rate was added today and has been under discussion is because that's the governor's threshold, and he says that once we're at fifteen percent of hospitalizations are related to COVID-19 infection, then he considers that trauma service area, if you will, to be experiencing greater rate of hospital utilization. A positivity rate, and as I mentioned a moment ago, we're gonna talk a little bit about how quickly these data indicators change. One that we hear a lot about and seems to create some contention and a lot of discussion is the positivity rate. So just briefly, going back to September first, that's the first time the local health authority ever published on the El Paso Strong website, the positivity rate. And keep in mind, all of our data comes straight from that website. We never deviate. If we have something that we are concerned about or we have a question about, we always go back to Dr. Ocaranza and ask him for clarification. And you'll see one point, I think, a little later in the slides where we talk about one of our rates that is now different. But on September first, they published it for the first time, and it was a six-point-three-one percent positivity rate. On September fourth, which is a Friday, and that's typically when we update our indicators, it was a six-point-oh-two percent positivity rate, and we were in overall code yellow, which according to our waiver meant that we should have been providing access to more face-to-face instruction. But because we limited and said we would not come back till October nineteenth, we didn't move at that date. On September eleventh, the rate dropped to four-point-six-eight. We were in overall code yellow, but we were approaching code green. And it was at this time that we made the announcement that two parents per student could attend the high school athletic events on the following Friday, so beginning the following Thursday and Friday. And so that announcement was made then when we were in code yellow, just like our data indicated. On September eighteenth, we were at four-point-nine percent, slightly higher, but still an overall code yellow. On September twenty-fifth, seven-point-seven-two percent, still rising, but in code yellow. And then on October second, as most of you are aware, the local health authority called a meeting of all the superintendents at eight AM and then published a nine-point-six-two positivity rate, which moved us into overall code red. As a result of that, we limited high school athletic attendance immediately, preventing parents and those specialty events like senior night and homecoming from continuing. Now, interestingly, as of yesterday, since September eighth, we've only had eighteen of three thousand fifty athletes on campus identified as positive with a COVID result. That's less than six-tenths of our student athletes on campus having a positive test result. Additionally, last week, we canceled the first soccer game and tennis tournaments that were scheduled to take place at the middle school level. And then finally, we issued directives to teacher and central office staff indicating that we would delay the October fifth start date to October nineteenth if we remained in code yellow. So if we remain in code red on October nineteenth, we're going to require permission from TEA to continue limiting on-campus instruction. The learning hubs must remain open. We cannot close those. And we'll have to have board approval to request that additional extension plan. And in the plan, we have to demonstrate a good faith effort to increase levels of on-campus instruction. Additionally, on October first, Commissioner Morath provided more information about school funding and the hold harmless provision because this is a big factor in whether or not we move, we stay in alignment with TEA. Currently, we don't have all of our students reporting, and yet TEA is looking at our funding and indicating they will hold us harmless for the first twelve-week period. They have now added another four weeks, I believe, to that period, allowing us to be held harmless for funding under these conditions. The learning hubs must remain open. The district must offer in-person instruction for any family desiring it, which right now is thirty-five percent as of October nineteenth. Or, as I mentioned a moment ago, we have to request the additional conditional waiver. And then, as I also said, we must demonstrate that good faith effort to allow for more on-campus attendance. So that wraps up that element. I'm going to try to talk about academics, but this is really Dr. Chacon's wheelhouse. So I'll just briefly tell you about the beginning-of-year assessments, and then finally, we'll wrap up with the next steps that are available to the district. So we just concluded the beginning-of-year assessments. Those act as basically a diagnostic starting point. They're intended to measure student mastery of teacs from the previous school year. And since we closed in March and moved immediately to remote instruction, this data is really important to inform how we continue forward. It's relevant to telling us how much of an impact that COVID-19 closure caused in the spring. So the results generally tell us that we are, in average, eight months behind for students for the same grade level from the prior spring. So diagnostic testing compared to spring of 2019 shows us we're eight months behind as an, on average. If the trend continues, in reading, we'll lose the four years of gains we've created, and in mathematics, we would lose six years of those gains. So you can tell that there is an impact from remote-only instruction. So you can tell that there is an impact from remote only instruction. So this is the actual comparison of the beginning of year assessment to the 2019 STAR results. And we've divided into reading, mathematics, English. We've looked at the top row talks or the top column section talks about this year's beginning of year assessment versus the STAR from last spring. We divided into all students, English learners and special education students. And the bottom section shows you the losses in reading, mathematics and English one for all of those student categories. And I don't need to go into those details. You can see the dramatic losses there ranging from 20% loss for all students in reading at the approaches level to 9% loss at the master's level for reading. So this is in the presentation, of course, we'll make it available to you shortly. The long term, what does this mean for our academic programs? Well, currently there's no relief from TEA or the federal government with regard to their mandates for state assessments. Those are still on the table. They are still expected of us and we've received no indication of relief from that. These beginning of year assessments indicate right now, if we continue on this path, we will very likely go from what would have been an A rating. Remember, we were 89 with the conditional and would have been an A had we not had the one core rating. It will likely drop us from that A to a C or a D rating, which obviously fuels greater interest in the charter schools and school choice. And it equates to potential loss of revenue, because if we lose students, obviously that ties to revenue. So next steps, where do we go from here? We are going to continue to monitor data. Data has informed every decision that we've made, every decision in the benefit, in the best interest and benefit of our students and our staff. We care greatly about the safety and security, and so we monitor this data closely. We have received good news, Ms. Valencia mentioned it. Dr. De La Torre, I believe, has heard more about it today. But we have been selected to participate in the state's pilot plan for rapid testing for teachers. We don't have all of the details yet. I can tell you that it's the quick test with a 10 minute result. And they will come to us and test all of our teachers prior to the return to school for face to face instruction. We will need to prepare and submit the waiver. And as Dr. De La Torre mentioned, and as Dr. Chacon has learned today from TEA, this is a conditional waiver. It has several elements we must include if we're going to even be considered for approval. It is not a guaranteed four week waiver. In fact, they don't want to guarantee, they don't want to grant four week waivers. They want to grant no more than two and force us to document why we would justify or warrant receiving anything longer than that. We have to show that we have a plan for increasing on campus access. It includes an attestation statement that we are committed to creating it or increasing it. And then we obviously have to have board approval for that waiver. So with that, I can take any questions. I'm going to stop sharing. And give you an opportunity to ask.
I have a question. When we have, when we go back and say the child has chosen to stay at home to do the online learning, is it possible if that child is having issues with one class, would they be able to attend that one class in person and then continue the online learning?
So our condition right now is that we ask you to make the decision for a nine week period. But I can tell you that we've had students and Dr. Chacon and Dr. De La Torre, I'm sure can chime in here. We've had students that we have accommodated in the nine week period that a parent has contacted us and said, I'm desperate. They've got to come back. Can you make room? I didn't make the election to begin with, and we have worked with them.
But, but, but they can't, in other words, what I'm saying is if, because this was a question posed to me. So if they choose to stay home and they're having, say, they're not doing well in geometry, can they just go to that one class geometry and then come back to online learning, online learning? Because they, they need that in person? Is that something they can do?
I'll defer to Dr. De La Torre or Dr. Chacon.
In my opinion, no.
No.
You're in, you're all in or you're not? And I, I think a grade in a class shouldn't supersede the pandemic that we're dealing with. So I have all the respect and I certainly understand why parents may not want to send their kids to school. But it's being done for their, their health and their welfare. It's not being done to circumvent a poor grade. And that's where I stand, but.
I, I think it was just mainly for, for just that class that they're having a hard time because I believe it was geometry. And that the math part of it, they just, they're, they're not getting it online. I was just seeing if there was anything they could do.
Come back full time. Because if you're willing to come back and, and come on campus and be around other students and other teachers, do it for all of the classes. I mean, ultimately it's up to the board if, if, if you want that kind of flexibility. But I'll defer to Connie. What kind of? How difficult would it be for our teachers to have this real fluid system of kids coming in and out? Right? I'll give you the, the opposite of it. A kid is doing great when he's in, in person in all of his classes, except maybe one class. But he was doing well when he was online. So now all of a sudden he says, you know what? I want to attend seven of my eight classes at school, but I was doing better at home in this one class. So I'd like to take that, that class at home. So it just becomes, I think, a little bit of a, I think it's a little disrespectful to the teachers, frankly. But ultimately we'll take your lead, Connie.
Yeah. So I'm going to speak from the position of a teacher who has returned to school. I'm on campus now with, with my kindergartners. I have two online and then I have 10 in the classroom with me. And we're following all the social distancing and we're doing all of the, all of the things, the things that we're supposed to be doing. We have screens set up. We have all that thing going on. But I can tell you, it's, it's a very difficult situation when a teacher has to adjust to doing, doing this work online and in the classroom. You kind of get hit from both sides. Either the online people are saying that you don't, you're not spending enough time with them. Or you've got the kids in the classroom who are, are, you know, what about them? And so you're kind of in a catch 22. And I would suspect the same thing is true if you're going to do pick and choose classes like that too. I feel like that you need to make the decision. And yes, I agree, the two that I have online totally agree that that's, that's great for them and that's what they need to do. But then, you know, if we're jumping in and out of the classroom like that, it, it just makes a difficult situation even harder. And that's just my opinion. I don't have any data or anything to pack me up, but that's just my opinion on that. Does that help answer what you guys are asking?
Yes, I would just pose that question and I thought it was a good, I, I'm not, I'm not an educator. I'm just asking you guys, you guys are the experts. So I didn't know if that would be an, an opportunity for, for a child to do that. If not, I understand the, you know, it being hard for our teachers and obviously trying to get them, get them situated. I have another question. What's the biggest difference between, between online and in-person learning? If the students and teachers must still be adhered to the social distancing in, in our model? What do you guys think as educators, what would be the difference?
I'll answer that too, if you want, because I can tell you exactly what it is. With the online, especially in the younger grades, it's very, very hard to keep them engaged in your, in your classroom. It's very hard to keep them engaged. And so they, I have some parents who've resorted to feeding them all the time. I had one student who pretty much ate all day long, just so that they would be at the computer. But how is that really helping them focus on what we're trying to present? And then our education system has become more hands on. When you're just doing computer work, you're losing those hands on, on properties. And we've found ways, and I'm sure our teachers will find ways of being able to show them, give them hands on activities that are sanitary and safe, just like we're doing. So what I'm saying is you, you lose out on some of the hands on stuff with the online education. I know with the older kids, a lot of times what I'm seeing with my husband is that they're spending more time trying to figure out how to, the kids are spending more time how to figure out how to not be online with him and play games or do something else. And then they are participating in, in their education. And it's just making, it, it makes it very difficult. You can't, I mean, you've got a kid who knows how to disguise what he's doing. And he's playing games, he's talking on the phone, he's doing whatever else. And the teacher is trying to keep them engaged, but it is, it's difficult. I'm not surprised to see our scores fall because it's, it's just a very, very difficult thing to do. And I think Dr. De La Torre has mentioned this before. We're teachers, we're not entertainers. And although we do a good job in our classrooms and we know how to motivate kids, there is, to me, I know I lose, that loses its translation when it comes into, into the classroom. But that's what I think, Dr. De La Torre, maybe you want to add to that.
Yeah, there's no comparison. And I know that the pivot we made in the spring to try to provide the online experience was pretty anemic. Dr. Chacon and her team have improved. They've improved the delivery, they've improved the curriculum, they've improved the rigor. The one thing we cannot control is trying to keep a five or six year old, an eight year old, a 13, 15 year old engaged in a curriculum that's actually more rigorous than what they went through in the spring, where they were guaranteed at least a C grade if they turned in all of their assignments. We no longer have the luxury to guarantee C grades for complete work. TEA, the governor, Mike Murath, all of them have said, we want evidence of learning. And it really, it, it, it really sickens me a little bit to know that on your behalf, my behalf, all of the work, all of the effort, the investment that we put in the last five years, and we're back at proficiency ratings standards that welcomed me back in 2014 after all that work. And it's not the teacher's fault. It's just not, it's not human nature for people to sit in front of a computer for six hours a day. And especially our young, and expect our teachers, as great as they are, to keep them engaged and, and excited. So it, it's been a, it's been catastrophic on a number of levels. The educational level, certainly the health and safety level. And we're all trying to do this, right? And that's what I'm saying. I don't know how surrounding districts or districts around the state can set a date of October 19th or October 26th, when no one has any idea what it will look like on October 19th or October 26th. And all you do is you go back and you tell the parents and the students, my bad. We thought that things were going to improve. Well, how can I possibly think that? I'm not in the medical field. All I can do is I get up every morning at 6:00 in the morning. I go right to El Paso Strong. I look at all of the data and it tells me whether or not we're headed in the right direction or we're not headed in the right direction. But that's as far as I can get into the medical world because that's not my expertise. So no, I have seen what Connie has described in classroom after classroom after classroom of kids working in our hubs. And it's better than nothing, but I can't help but feel like they're being, they're being cheated. And I look forward to the day that we can all get back in, in school and, and, and do what we do best.
Absolutely. I got one last one. Do we have an update on, on our latest survey on kids staying at home and, and versus returning to campus?
Yes, sir. You're going to get about 65 to 70% of our students and their families, they're going to opt to stay at home. And you're going to get about 10% of our students indicating that they want to go full time, five days a week. They don't want to even take Friday off. And about 25%, 20 to 25% want a hybrid model. But when you think about it, the hybrid model is a lot like the coming back to school model. Because under a hybrid model, they come Monday through Thursday and then they stay home on Friday. But that means that at least for four days of the week, if you take the, the almost 25% and you add the 9% that want to come every day, you're looking at, at present, one in three students coming back to school.
I'm good. Anybody else? I had a, a question from Ms. Leeper and a question for Dr. De La Torre. Ms. Leeper, on your slide that you talked about the athletes, I think you had 3,045. I should have written that down. You had 3,045 and you said that less than 16 or something of those students were positive. Were all those students tested?
Yes, sir. And it's 18 out of 3,050.
18 out of 3,050.
18 informed us that they were positive and then we contact traced from them. So we're certain that they were positive test cases.
Okay, but the remaining 3,000, they were also tested as well, correct?
Oh, I see what you're asking me. No, so not all of, those are 3,050 athletes participating today in athletic programs within the district. And that's since September 8th. Since September 8th, only 18 student athletes have come forward and been tested and been identified as having COVID.
Okay, does that also reflect, is that just high school or is that middle school as well?
That's total athletes that are on campus. So it could be cross country at the middle school level, tennis.
That are on campus. And there's no recommendation, there's no recommendation for testing for the remaining group? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
There's some discussion about it. And I think there's, there's a push towards can we test all students? Can we test all athletes? Anyone can voluntarily go get tested today at no cost at Riverside Comprehensive Care Clinic. So it's open and we encourage it. Whether or not we're going to require it is another question. We do have one team that we have identified for testing after more than one case was identified in, say, a three day period.
Okay, all right, very good. And then on your, your first slide that you had put up there, and I apologize, I should have stopped you at that point. On the first slide that talked about the contact tracing, it was your algorithm for contact tracing. Is those folks, you have a, you have a, a student or a faculty member that's positive and then has been in contact with other folks, is there a requirement for them to test?
Requirement for the contacts to test?
Yes, ma'am.
The high risk contact is tested, yes. And that comes through the city department. So the city public health department will personally reach out to them, arrange for them to test. And if they're asymptomatic, they might not, what they get and what Dr. Ocaranza said today is they want them to test, they've encouraged them to test, but some, they can't make them, if you will. Now, we say if you have symptoms, we, we back them up then and they have to go through the whole screening process. So you're out because you're quarantining. You want to come back, you must be asymptomatic, right? And you could never in that 14 day period have experienced any symptoms. Because once you experience a symptom, then you revert back and you go through the whole, now you have to be 10 day symptom free. You have to be without fever reducing medications for 24 to 72 hours. All those things kick in. So while we can't force testing, we can force them out for 14 days until they've met all the criteria and have never had a symptom before they can come back. And we do do that.
Okay, thank you. Dr. De La Torre, I, I, I heard the folks speaking, the speakers talking earlier. And I just, I saw an article right before the meeting where some of the ISDs are talking about, here in El Paso County are talking about. Oh, by the way, I apologize, thank you, Ms. Leeper. Some of the ISDs are talking about asking for an extension from TEA through to December. I sat in on some of the Tasa Tasby sessions last week. last week, including the legal one, and I and I I also sat in on Commissioner Maras. And I sat in on yours, by the way, well done. Um but uh I I didn't realize that there was an opportunity for extension till December.
No, there isn't. Uh nothing that we have heard come from TEA has uh mentioned November or December. What they have told us is you're applying for a four-week extension, a four-week transition period. What we expect is that if during that four weeks your own internal system indicates that it's safe for teachers and students to come back, we fully expect you uh to do that. Uh our system is tied to the numbers. It it's not arbitrary, it's not Xavier's having a good day or he's having a bad day, so he's decided to make the teachers come back. It is a light switch. When we move from red to yellow, we're gonna ask our teachers to come back. When we move from yellow and approach green, we're gonna ask our students to come back. But it's not because I want them to come back, it's because those are the the standards that Dr. Ocaranza and the local health officials and the county officials and and the state officials have set as um statistical points that we should be working toward. And it's safer that way so that when people go, hey, when you decide to cancel a football game or have a football game, it seems very arbitrary. I don't want it to be arbitrary. I told all of the superintendents earlier this morning, you gotta quit making decisions based on emotion or whether or not your respective uh teachers' associations are uh putting pressure on you, you've got to come up with metrics that say, from this to this, no. From this to this maiden, and from this to this, we gotta get back to work.
And 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 I just to add to what you you said is that I I, you know, I haven't talked to all the trustees, but I think we all agree that, you know, just uh that we need to get back to school. We need to get back to school desperately and and um and serve our our students and and uh but it just uh it's difficult, it's difficult right now and and uh we balance that and and like you, you know, I get up early. Uh you know, I see that we had almost four hundred cases yesterday and and it's uh it's incredibly disturbing, you know, and trying to balance what our students need and 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 what's going on in our community. And so I thank you very much. I I appreciate that answer.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Sir, Mr. Mr. Ramidis, anybody else?
Catherine, I think.
Okay, I have a I have a couple of questions. Um assuming, so I'll 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 go one by one. Assuming we we do have our our teachers and students return on October nineteenth, depending on where we at on with the um with the color codes. How many, how many employees and students total are we projecting to be on the on campuses?
A hundred percent of our employees and about thirty percent of our students.
So six thousand something employees will be on the campuses?
We don't have six thousand employees on the campus. We have approximately three thousand teachers. The administrators have been on their campuses since probably August first. Custodians have been on their campuses, cafeteria workers have been on their campuses. So most employee classifications have already been on the campus and are currently on the campus.
Uh my other question is, if if in fact, let's say, let's think positive and well, first I want to start by saying I I there's no, there's no argument for me in that we know the best delivery of education is the traditional method, which is face-to-face. That's that's a given. Um we all know and and so that I'll um just your Amida's said it very eloquently. It's a very hard place to balance. We know that's the best method. However, we also have the method that is currently, I I I'm not sure how comfortable I feel with um with using the past for the projections from the testing that we received because the teachers are doing a really excellent job right now since um August seventeenth in in this new way of delivering um the material and the requirements from the state. I I I observe it daily. And um I think it's very, very different, and I think that our results will be different um and improved uh when we when we retest. Um I also think that, for example, if we we can't just, we can't just uh contribute all of the negativity, even in testing, if once we go back to, oh, they're so behind, because the reality is they're also going to have a lot of absences even once they return because of having to quarantine fourteen days at a time. So there's going to be many factors that contribute contribute to possibly us having a C or a D in our rating system, and that needs to be vocalized and 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 expressed to the state. It's not just returning to school and suddenly our scores will immediately increase. There's factors that need to also be considered. Um so if we are in the red, once once we, let's say we, let's say for argument's sake, we return on October nineteenth, everybody's in the classroom that wants to be in the classroom as far as students, there's teachers in the classroom. And then we're we're consistently in the red for the next month. What happens? When do we say, okay, we have to close this down, or after that we lose that ability? What happens then?
Well, I don't think we'd remain in the red for a month. Um but let's keep in mind a couple of things. The teachers in the classroom are in the classroom with at most six to eight students. We can send the students home. The teachers can remain in the classroom and they can continue to teach online in the classroom um without any other individual coming in into their classroom or certainly within the six uh feet radius in the classroom. So I think they would be safe. Uh I think the students, if uh we suspended uh school for a week, suspended school for two weeks and sent them back home, I still believe they would have been safer at school because you don't know what you're sending them to. You don't know what's happening there. I know what's happening in our schools. And especially if we participate in the program where every single teacher before returning to their classroom is given the new rapid uh test, COVID test, to determine whether or not they test positive or not. So one of the things that I think we can tell our community is of the three thousand teachers that returned to work, a hundred percent of them were COVID-free, ninety-five percent of them were COVID-free, but you bring them back and 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 here's the other thing I would say, you're gonna get kids who test positive. You're gonna get adults who test positive. I was talking to parents from Keller ISD recently. They, in one case, uh closed a grade level for a week. In another case, they closed an elementary school for two weeks, and then you come back. But the numbers that we shared with you, those numbers are right now. They're not because of fourteen-day quarantines or closing schools or interruptions in instruction. Those are the numbers before we even get started with face-to-face.
I hear you. I hear you, and I I mean, there's been a lot of in, there's been a lot of inconsistency in both our employees, our teachers, our aides, in their lives as well as the students. So it's that that's an expected um result for what we're going through during a pandemic. I I guess I'm, what I'm trying to say is I I hear what you're saying, and I'm looking, I I recognize the data. But I also have to, we have to also acknowledge that we are in a pandemic and things have changed everywhere, and it's going to affect it um results, the scoring results. That's just, that's just a reality.
But our role is the school system. It's not everything else that's happened out.
Of course, of course, but what's going on in the community does affect our school system, hence why we're we are where we're at. But my my other question, um if if kids are are quarantining for the fourteen days, well then, do they then have access to virtual learning or what happens in those fourteen days?
Yes, ma'am. That's one of the benefits of of becoming so comfortable with virtual learning is that the student actually remains part of that uh teacher's class of record. And unless they're hospitalized, would simply stay home and continue their um education online. Because remember, every teacher, uh and Connie made mention of this, is likely gonna have at most six or seven kids sitting in front of them, at most. The rest of their class is online. So all that happens is that student that tests positive, once we do the contact tracing, is that student remains home and he or she become part part of the online group, not the face-to-face group. And that's what I think is creating such a burden on our teachers that they have this sort of this dual responsibility, but there really is no way around it.
Well, if there's, I know you and I had a very good discussion, and I don't know if you're you're comfortable to share some of that um here. I I think that that um leaving the options open are very important during this pandemic. Uh and I appreciate what what some of the ideas that you had, and I don't know if you feel comfortable to share a little bit.
One, one, one idea could be that if the numbers worked out and you took it grade level by grade level, and I'll use North Loop. And I know that at North Loop Elementary School, uh seventeen first graders have decided that uh they're comfortable coming back to school. We could ask the first-grade team whether or not any one of them would be interested in coming back and working face-to-face with those seventeen children. We'd probably need two FTEs because seventeen children would probably have to be divided in half, and you'd have eight in one classroom and uh six or seven in another classroom. That would allow those teachers to work exclusively in a face-to-face environment. The rest of the first-grade team would then be responsible for providing online learning to all of the first graders at North Loop Elementary School, and they could do that from the comfort of their home. Now, we'd have to do that pre-K. K, one, two, three. Here's the caveat, and I think we've talked about it several times tonight. Those students who have decided to stay home and get instruction from those teachers to have decided to teach from home, the results in terms of progress and growth and proficiency have been significantly lower than what happens in the classroom. So we're creating something that's convenient for the teachers, it's convenient for the students. But if our mission, right, if our goal, if my evaluation instrument says this percent of students need to be performing at this level, I'm shooting myself in the foot because I know that those kids at home, although they may have a dedicated teacher who is staying at home, are not gonna get the experience they need uh to prepare them for college, career, or military readiness. I give the kids in the classroom with the teacher a better chance in the areas of growth and progress, regardless of where they start. They're gonna have a better experience than the seventy-five percent of the students that we can accommodate at home versus the twenty-five percent of students that we can accommodate at school. And that's assuming that you're gonna get a teacher or two teachers in every grade level that are gonna say, I'm willing to come back.
I don't think it's convenience, though, Dr. Delatorre. I I know, I you guys know I'm a parent and and I've spoken to many parents. I don't think it's convenient to keep our our it's not convenient for me to keep my child at home. I'm keeping my child at home because in my, in my view, it's the safest place for her to be. And I know everybody has a different situation, so I'm not trying to tie mine into the the rest of of our parents. And I don't think the teachers think um being on on learning, um teaching virtually is convenient. They're spending way more hours doing this. They're spending way more time doing this. I I think if they're doing, it's it's something that has to be done during the pandemic. We we've assimilated and adjusted and and we're all doing our best to be safe.
Well, they could do that in their classroom at their campus and be safe. They'd be the only person in the classroom.
Yeah, I hear you. I hear it. It's a, it's just a different, I guess, a different perspective on it. I think that's it for now, I of my questions. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Mr. Rosales? Can you unmute? You're you're muted, Mr. Rosales.
I got a new computer, so I don't know.
There you go, Mr. Rosales. We can hear you now.
Um with all the, with all that's going on, I I feel that um um it's very difficult to to um pinpoint a given answer, a given approach. Uh the best thing we can do in this in this world of of where we're at currently is is continue the 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 direction that we're headed. And um and as Dr. Delatorre has mentioned, um that metrics to me is is something that we have to work with. And there's gonna be a lot of input from parents and what have you, and and I've heard both ways. But um we we, I feel as a board of trustee that um the message that I would want to leave to the parents is that we're gonna do everything and anything possible to maintain the education standards to our children, even though I see the numbers going down and may continue to go down. But considering where we're at and considering this this pandemic, one thing that that I will interject here, I think the city of the of this this community has got to come to grips with the reality that this contagious disease is going to affect anyone and everyone. And what has happened in the last two, three, four days, it's alarming. And it's alarming in many ways. And you all know all this, but it's it's something that uh impacts, no matter what kind of game you have, um it it's it's gonna create some this uh some decisions that need to be made. But in in my, inasmuch as saying that, please, parents, we're here to provide the best, best possible approach to making sure the children and the teachers are taken care of and continue with the message, with the the uh direction of education, and this is our purpose. So I I I didn't want to say anything because I'm not an educator. But as I see things from the, from my my point of view, uh we can talk all night about this and that and what have you. And and just like the numbers have increased to three hundred, it's alarming. And we have got to be very lucid. Uh we 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 got, we got to make sure that we we're able to to um to roll with the punches. And um I wish I could give a better message than that, but this this is the real deal. And so I give the the administration a lot of credit. Uh for you people that are in the educator, you, Connie and uh so that are that are in the education business, I give you a lot of credit for being in there. Uh because it's a dangerous area that you're in. So thank you, guys.
Anybody else? I guess um Ms. Matheson, we can move on.
Yes, sir, to uh the internal auditor.
Um do we, do we have any questions for the internal auditor, miss? Hello?
Good evening, everybody.
Champagne?
Yes, sir.
We have a question, Ms. Ramidis. Go ahead, Ms. Ramidis.
I apologize, I was just waving a champagne.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I guess not. The champagne, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on. Um we will now discuss the agenda items as listed. This posted notice uh of the combined workshop and the regular meeting of Isleta Independent School District uh Board of Trustees for October seventh, twenty twenty, and related recommendation, uh recommended motions with the Superintendent Executive Cabinet and receive responses to their questions and or request additional information through the superintendent in preparation for deliberation and action on said items. Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and read them out. Please stop me if uh you have any questions or wish to pull an item for a separate vote. Consent, Board of Trustees, Board Workshop by Video Conference, uh September fourteen, twenty twenty at six P M. Board of Trustees uh Board Meeting by Video Conference. Board of Trustees Board Meeting by Video Conference, September 17, 2020, 6:00 p.m. Monthly Financial Update for August 2020. Number four, ratification of award of YSD contract 20210028 with New Mexico State University. Number five, FFA Local Wellness and Human Services Physical Examination. Charlie, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Can someone speak to that, please?
Good evening, Dr. Latorre and Mr. Ramírez. It's just 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 a waiver that was granted because of the COVID from UIL. Basically, what it says is any any student athlete who already had a a physical examination already on file can use that for this year. This excludes any incoming seventh graders because eventually they're going to be first time athletes and any new student athletes who join. And also any any student athlete who may have had, say, for example, a broken leg or something of that nature. So those individuals, and so the trainers would look at all those files and then say a student athlete had a severe illness or maybe an injury, they would then recommend that they go get a new physical exam.
Okay, so so we do have some, we do have physical exams on file for for the bulk of those students, student athletes, and then the newer, the new athletes, they have, they'll still have to go out and get a physical exam.
That's correct, sir. And it's typically all your seventh graders because they weren't athletes at sixth graders. And then any new student athletes who decide to to participate this school year.
Okay, that, thank you very much for clarifying that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I will proceed. Number six, ratification of award of cooperative purchase of furniture with Moore and Company Incorporated. Number seven, ratification of cooperative purchase from Team First Technologies LLC for in industrial instructional technology.
And somebody just, can somebody elaborate on that quickly? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Good evening, sir. Yes, sir. So you may recall that we were preparing to produce or introduce additional technology into the classrooms to facilitate the com combined instruction, both face to face and virtually. And so these are those interactive display boards. They're seventy-five inch. It's basically the touchscreen television projector built in. You see them at all the new campuses. This will make them available to every single core teacher in the district.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Leaper.
Certainly.
But Charlie?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, on the previous agenda item, Riverside High School, do you want to pull that one so you can read that?
Yes, yes, sir.
I think it'd be appropriate, sir.
Okay. Okay, we can go ahead if we can go and pull that. Okay, we're going to the action items. Approve approval of award of Phase One Solicitation of Bond 2019, RFP 03, BP 11906, New Elementary Schools, Dolphin Terrace, Riverside, and Scottsdale. Do we have any discussion? Nope. Okay. Go ahead and move on. During the workshop, a proportion of of the agenda number.
Number six.
Yeah, item six was was pulled. Pull for separate vote on that. So, okay, so then now we're going to the consent. The the order of the agenda has been approved. Let's go with the consent. So I, so what I have to do on this, Ms. Matheson? Just go ahead and approve the the rest of it, right?
Right.
It it would be a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda items?
May I have a motion on on the consent agenda items? I'm sorry.
That's the move to have the consent items approved.
Mr. Rosales?
Yes, sir.
Is uh, and then can I have a move to appropriate?
And so Mr. Rosales, trustee Rosales would then read his motion?
Mr. Rosales, can you please read your motion?
I move that the consent items, with the exception of the one that was pulled, be approved by the board at this point.
Do I have a second?
Second.
By Ms. Woodruff? Ready to vote? Trustee Ramírez, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, trustee Bustillos, vote yes. Six in favor. Ms. Matheson, now do I go to that that certain number six or?
Yes, sir. It's on page four. And you can make the motion.
I move to the ratification of administration, ratify ratify award YSD contract. Oh, no, that's the wrong one. Number six, correct? Sorry about that. I move to recommend by administration approve award connection with BP 1907 Riverside High School Career and Technology Center with Moore Company Incorporated for the purchase of furniture through the, through a purchasing cooperative for for a not to exceed one of one million from 2019 bond funds, including ratification of the purchase of the classroom furniture in the amount of five hundred and forty, five four nine, five seven four point six four, contingent upon receipt from one two nine five certificate of interest parties.
A second.
Mr. Ramírez, how do you vote? Are we voting on that? We all are going to vote on this? Mr. Ramírez, how do you vote?
I'm sorry, sir. I have problems. I vote yay. Yes.
Mr. Rosales, how do you vote?
Yay.
Ms. trustee trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote? Trustee Lucero?
One more time.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote? Trustee Hagerty?
Yes.
And I, trustee Bustillos, vote yes. Really excited. Thank you for this opportunity for our students and our teachers and our staff to be able to enjoy new furniture at Riverside High School. I know everybody out there is really excited about it. I and I know Dr. Latorre has visited the campus and and we're truly excited for us to have this for our students and our faculty. Thank you so much. And we move on to the action items. Approve award of Phase One Solicitation Bond 2019, RFP 03, BP 1906, New Elementary Schools, Dolphin Terrace, Riverside, and Scottsdale. Is there a discussion? No further discussion. May I have a motion?
Mr. Bustillos?
Yes. Mr. Hagerty?
I move that we approve the award of Phase One Solicitation Bond 2019, RFP 03, BP 1906, New Elementary Schools for the mighty Dolphin Terrace, Riverside, and Scottsdale.
The Scottsdale.
Hey, don't forget about my Rangers, Riverside. Thank you so much for that. Can I have a second?
You already got the printer. Don't worry about it.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Trustee Ramírez, how do you vote?
Yay. Yay. Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, trustee Bustillos, vote yes. Six in favor. And I guess this brings us to the end. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.